Okay, first I'm gonna call the special session of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board to order. Roll call please, Bev.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Chair LaGaye.
Here.
Board Member Magazine and Board Member Hanson are absent. Board Member Yates.
Present.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
And Board Member DePorter.
Here.
Thank you, Bev. Do we have any speaker cards on this?
No, Chairman.
Okay, consideration of approving the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board meeting minutes of May 5th, 2016. There is no staff report. Any council discussion? You have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor's second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair five zero.
For items two and three, there's one staff report. I will open the public hearing regarding Resolution EMCFD 2016-02 approving the tentative budget as the final budget for the district of the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017. Grady?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you is a resolution approving the tentative budget as the final budget for the district for fiscal year July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017. The Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District was originally formed to finance the public improvements that are in the master planned area of Eagle Mountain. The budget that's being requested is $409,226,000, and that is entirely for the payment of the debt service for those bonds that finance the public improvements. With that, I would recommend approval.
All right. Any comments or questions from the board? If not, I will close. No speaker cards?
No, Chairman.
Close the public hearing. Consideration of Resolution EMCFD 2016-02 as just presented. Any further board discussion? Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Mayor's second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman five zero.
All right, then. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Special session of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities Board is adjourned. Now, I will open the special session of Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board. We have a roll call, please, Bev.
Chair Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Chair LaGaye.
Here.
Board Members Magazine and Hanson are absent. Board Member Yates.
Present.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member DePorter.
Here.
Any speaker cards?
No, Chairman.
Consideration of approving Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board meeting minutes of May 5th, 2016. There is no staff report. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair five zero.
For items number two and three, there is one staff report. I will open the public hearing. Public hearing regarding Resolution CMD 2016-02 approving the tentative budget as the final budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017. Grady, please.
Yes, thank you, District Chair. District Chair and Board Members, before you is the annual budget for the Cottonwoods Maintenance District. The Maintenance District was originally formed to provide for maintenance in the area that was otherwise unable to be done through the town. The annual budget that is proposed for next year is $5,424, which I think is a very modest amount. The homeowners in that area that received the benefit of this all are assessed to pay for this, and with that, I would recommend approval.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of Resolution CMD 2016-02 as just presented. Any further board discussion? Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair five zero.
You have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Okay. Now, we go on to our regular session agenda. Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is... Is he here? Percy. Pastor Erickson. There you are. Justin. Great. I can see you back there. Pastor Justin Erickson from Harvest Bible Chapel. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Let's join together in a word of prayer. Father, with great joy, we give thanks for the unusual blessing that belongs to us to live in a place like this. This town where we have so many wise and capable leaders, where we enjoy an abundance of prosperity, where we are a town that celebrates our safety and our unity, and we even think about the many who have left and are leaving us now to go to different parts of the world, who will be experiencing a variety of different things, and we're eager to see them again and to celebrate what we have together. You tell us in your word to seek the welfare of the city, and that in so doing, we will find our welfare, and that you will pour out your blessing, and so we want to do that right now. We want to pray for our first responders and all of our leaders in our government. We want to pray for our Sheriff Department and our EMTs and our Fire Department. I want to ask that you will continue to guard them and give them wisdom and skill in what they do, that you will keep them safe, that you will guard and protect their families, and that you will reward them for the dedication and the sacrifice that they make on our behalf. I want to thank you for this council, and I want to pray for them tonight. They are appointed here tonight by you, your word says, and you've raised them up for this time. And so I ask that you will give them the wisdom to lead, the humility to serve, and the conviction to approve what you approve. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Can we roll call, please, Bev?
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor LaGaye.
Aye, here.
Council Member DePorter.
Here.
Council Member Brown.
Here.
Council Members Hanson and Magazine are absent. Council Member Yates.
Present.
Okay, I've got a short economic development report, but before I do that, I want to say welcome back Bob Burns from the Times. We missed you, Bob. Great to have you back. We like you better than Ryan. Don't tell him I said that, though. Today was our last GPEC meeting for our fiscal year. We discussed future strategies for enticing businesses to relocate to Arizona instead of California, or the newest populous state, which is Utah. GPEC will be working closely with MAG and with the Arizona Chamber of Commerce. GPEC also will be putting together a committee of Arizona CEOs to work with our legislators on issues related to economic development. GPEC will be working closely with all of these entities to establish better legislation. We also heard a presentation, Jeff Kramer, Arizona Talent Optimization. He works with high school students who have no interest in going on to college. Rather than have them drop out of high school or take a low-paying job after graduation, this organization presents options of training in jobs that pay very well but require no college degree, jobs that many students would not normally consider. Students become a lot more interested when they hear how much some of these jobs pay. For instance, linemen can make over $100,000. The organization also looks at future needs of companies and helps schools prepare their students for the skills that they will need. And that is my report for today. And now, we go on to the recognition of Fire Chief Randy Robertson, appreciation for his nine years of service to the town of Fountain Hills. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, you recall at the last meeting, we had an introduction of our new Fire Chief, and normally, that's not done in that order, but it was just the way the timing worked out. As you mentioned, Chief Randy Roberts has been the chief of this town for a number of years. He has actually served the community for nine years. Previously to being the chief, he served as the assistant chief. He had a distinguished career in the city of Phoenix, working for Phoenix Fire, which, if any of you have worked in other areas of the country, Phoenix Fire is really considered kind of the leader in fire service, particularly with what they call the CAD or computer-aided dispatch. And so, he brought with him tremendous experience working for our town through Rural Metro, our partner, for providing fire service here. A few things I just wanted to recognize in Chief Roberts that most people probably are not aware of is, under his leadership, just in the past year, all of our ambulance crews are all firefighters. So when we have emergency calls for service that... or fires, we have firefighters actually on the ambulances that actually coordinate with the firefighters and the command structure. So this is a pretty big deal, and it's not costing our taxpayers a penny for that. And so that's a very big thing. And under his leadership, that was something that he was able to help institute through Rural Metro, that. The other thing that people probably aren't aware of, but we all kind of appreciate when we pay our annual homeowner's insurance, and businesses have their commercial fire insurance that they pay, and that is our ISO ratings actually improved during his time with the town. And so, ISO ratings are... they look at such things as response times, water flows, you know, your staffing at your fire departments. So this really shows a lot of initiative and effort on the part of our chief to really make this a great fire department. So with that, I would ask the mayor to join me in presenting a small token of the town's appreciation for his service to the community.
That's presented to Chief Randy Robertson, appreciation of your nine years' service to the town of Fountain Hills and your outstanding leadership and commitment to our community, June 2007 to June 2016.
Thank you for your job well done.
Oh, no, you have the speech. You can't just walk away.
You're one and only opportunity.
A story, something.
Can I just wish Councilmember Brown a happy birthday and call it good? Can we just do that? Thank you.
No, it's been a fabulous, fabulous...
Oh, here it comes.
I'm sorry.
It's been a great nine years, and most of the thanks actually go to those people in that group.
Amen.
I was fortunate enough just to kind of be the conductor and kind of give them just a little bit of direction, but they're just tremendous people, the men and women that work for Rural Metro Fountain Hills, just to make this the best fire operation anywhere in the world, in my humble opinion. And I just want to thank the mayor and council, and I want to thank you, Grady, for your tremendous support through the years. I mean, this really turned this into a premier fire department, in my estimation, because of the support that we received from you all. So, thank you, and we'll begin to thanks to them.
Thank you, Chief. Bye.
Speaker cards?
Mayor, we have one speaker, Richard Davidson.
Okay. And I'll just remind everybody that this is... would be something that's not on our agenda. Wearing orange. Wear orange.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh and Council. In the last week, Fountain Hills experienced two episodes of gun violence, physically impacting 14 people. Most, if not all, were residents of a fair and usually peaceful community. Actually, the psychological impact on most of the rest of the town is much greater. Now, many of us feel encroached upon by an uglier and meaner outside world. We know this by its vicious hand... by its vicious brand. Drive-by shots, an AR-15 backed up with flak jacket and extra rounds. Loaded guns concealed in moving vehicles and brandished tools of assault are warning signs of trouble. My first request, my suggestion, is that a law be passed in Fountain Hills that loaded guns be permitted, prohibited, in or near moving vehicles. Any verified instance should incur a hefty fine and be attached to the person's license and registration. There has also been a great deal of consternation here in recent weeks about equal bathroom access for folks with peculiar kind of condition on as transgender. Though many who are educated in these matters say this is a necessary condition, many who are uneducated in these matters have their doubts. In any case, some of the doubters go on to say that if you cannot verify a person's identity, you must assume that the worst is about to happen. They say we must heed the warning signs of danger. Dangerous people will take advantage of lax controls. It seems in our town... it seems that in our town, privacy, independence, and freedom don't work well together. As a town citizen watching my local government at work in these close quarters, I wish to say this is the place to figure out how to make these things work. I know that this esteemed council has to make tough choices for everyone's benefit. I know that many times, you run up against outside constraints of state and federal laws. Somehow, you have to make it all work. When that is made difficult by the higher authorities, I would ask that you speak loudly and forcefully to those authorities on our behalf in favor of workable solutions. I'm wearing orange today to support folks across the nation and locally that want gun violence to decrease through more controls, through delineated limits and responsibility placed on the use of guns in our town. Please do everything you can to keep this dangerous... these dangerous tools, tools that are designed to kill, away from children and innocent bystanders. Keep them away from public spaces and off our streets, at least when loaded. We are well within our rights to arrange this. If not, we should be, so I ask you to pass resolutions that say as much. Evil does lurk in the hearts of men and some women, too. Sheep can suddenly turn into wolves. I read that in a story somewhere. When it does, please have some laws and fines and jail time at the ready. I believe some here are quite ready to take strong actions with public bathrooms. I'm asking that this council also take assertive action regarding guns on public roads. Laws for the public welfare and safety do not have to be draconian. Let everyone at least relieve themselves in peace. Let them cart around their guns if they need be. But I don't see why you can't post signs advising of fines and to educating the public of the consequences for lewd or dangerous behavior. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll go on to our consent agenda items. We have six. Can I get a motion to accept as written?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and a roll call, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council Member DePorter.
Aye.
Council Member Brown.
Aye.
Council Member Yates.
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaGaye.
Aye.
Mayor five zero.
Okay, now I will recess the regular session and convene our special session. I keep going in and out today. Call the special session to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor LaGaye.
Here.
Council Member Yates.
Present.
Council Member Brown.
Here.
Council Member DePorter.
Here.
Council Members Hanson and Magazine are absent.
Okay, for items number one, number two, there will be one staff report. I am going to open the public hearing regarding Resolution 2016-07 adopting the tentative budget as the final budget for the town of Fountain Hills for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the budget before you is a balanced budget. It's completely in compliant with state laws and regulations pertaining to municipal finance. As you're aware, the... our budget process is a very long and arduous process, and it's that way on purpose. This is perhaps one of the most important things that the council is responsible for. Through your fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers here in town, and also in trying to identify a means for financing the various programs and services, debt service, and capital improvement projects that we do each year, we have to put together a financial plan. And so, before you is a financial plan, or is what we typically call a budget. And so, I'm going to go ahead and turn over the presentation portion of this to our Finance Director Craig Rudolfi, who will be going through a very brief presentation, and we can, between the two of us, answer any questions that you may have. With that, go ahead, Craig.
Thank you, Grady. Mayor and council members, this presentation should look familiar to you. I'll ask if you can remember the numbers at a later date. Our final budget, as we presented it as the tentative budget, is $40,484,193. That number includes a little bit over $6 million in operating transfers between funds, so we are essentially double counting those numbers in the $40 million number. This is our budget in relation to prior years. As you can see, it's about $2.5 million higher than prior year... than last year, primarily because of those inter-fund transfers. Broken down by our core services, essentially our different departments, as you can see and as we all know, public safety consumes the majority of the budget, except for capital projects, and we will have those primarily expended during the... during the year. These were our assumptions that went into developing the budget. Increases for public safety of 7% and 3%, estimating 96 building permits. We have election costs included in there, and we now must continue with the community service... community center debt service payment subsidy. As you've heard us talk before, projecting out five years, the town is looking at a deficit position in each of the next five year... four years, cumulatively amounting to about $5.9 million. This is a graph showing the blue line is our revenues, and the bars are the expenditures, and as you can see, we're short in every year. Nevertheless, these are our fund balances that we project at the end of 2017. Little over $7.5 million in our general fund, which includes our contingency or the rainy day fund, and only $1.8 million in the capital projects fund. As far as personnel's are concerned, we added 1.63 positions for the ensuing year, totaling 43 full-time and 23 part-time. Council approved or requested that we include a 3.5% increase for employees, and the total personnel costs are approaching $4 million. Once again, our final total is $40,441.93. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions for Craig?
Councilman Yates.
Real quick, again, every year up until now, we've always done inner account transfers, and they're accounted the same way, so it's not that we did something different this year. You just made a note so that we acknowledge that that's what happened.
Yes, and beginning next year, I'm going to be taking those numbers out so that we match the requirements of the Auditor General's office that is required for our budget submission to them.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions for Craig? Vice Mayor LaGaye.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have any questions, which may seem odd to the public as we're looking at a $40 million budget, but I think it's important to know that this is a process that our Finance Department, staff, council have been involved in for a number of months, and we've had a number of sessions and discussions and special sessions on this. That being said, Craig, once again, fantastic job to you and your entire staff, and Grady as well, with the entire staff. It's been a community process and has a partnership between all of... all of our staff. So, once again, good work, appreciate it, and I'm sure you'll manage our expenses well going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have a speaker card? Okay. We have a speaker card on the budget.
Mayor, we have five speaker cards.
We have five speaker cards on the budget?
All right. Walter Maywald, followed by DJ Willard, followed by Bill Myers.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Walter Maywald. I'm speaking on behalf of those of us who like hiking in Fountain Hills. I understand that some money has been allocated for a trailhead at the end of Adaro Canyon. I'm asking that the council keep those funds in the budget for the next year, and hopefully commence construction of this site before costs increase and all of a sudden, we come up with a severe budget shortfall for this project. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I think we all want that as soon as possible, as soon as we can, which is as soon as they get the road in. We will follow through with that.
So this might be a little overkill. I'm DJ Willard. I've been in town for six years, trailblazer for many of those. I've been here to see the council support the replating of Adaro Canyon, and again, might be a little overkill, but we just want to be so sure that this... this trailhead goes in as designed in all its... all its detail, so that we make a good first impression when it comes... when it comes time to do that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Myers, followed by Jerry Butler, and then Bill Craig.
Bill, you brought friends today, huh? You brought friends today.
Yes. Actually, a little later on, I've asked Bill Craig to have some of the conservancy guys come, and he'll say, "Hey, everybody stand up who's for the preserve," and so that'll be his deal. Bill Myers, you've seen me before. I'm kind of a Johnny One Note. Preserve, preserve, preserve. I just want to thank the mayor, and the council, and the town manager, and the staff, and everybody who went together to get the $2.3 million for the preserve in our $40 million budget. Thank you very, very much. It's really comprised of two elements. One is a million eight that has to be spent on the preserve or given back to somebody. The town can't use that for anything else. And thank you again for the $468,000 of CIP money. Those two together add up to the $2.3 million. The... and you know, I should have brought some notes up here, shouldn't I have? Actually, I want to say that I think the preserve is actually going to have some economic benefits for our town. This is something that might be a little bit of a surprise. Can't tell you how many more meals will be sold because of that preserve, how many more hotel rooms will be rented, and the third one is how many more houses might be sold because of that. Let me explain that. I talked to three realtors earlier today. We talked about the preserve a little bit, and the trailhead, and all three of these are good realtors, been here a long time, sell a lot of properties. The first one said, "Trailhead? Preserve? What are you talking about?" That indicated to me, we need a information blast somehow over the next six months or 20 months, something like that, and I think that the MMPC has some ideas on that, and I'm sure the town will, too. The second one, somebody you all know, said he takes people up there to the Copper Wind if they're trying to decide what town to live in. Our town, Scottsdale, Chandler, somewhere else, and if they're on the verge of the decision, boom, taking them up there. They... it helps make that decision. He says he'd like to get the trailhead built next week so he can take them on up to a better view and sell more houses. Again, I just want to say thank you very much, and again, $2.3 million. We want to make sure that it stays in the budget and that the project is built as designed. I think, hopefully, we can build it for a little bit less than $2.3 billion, but there are some ad alternatives, which is a good idea, and... but hopefully, we don't have to use those and cut the project down at all. We want to keep all the... all of the restrooms of the whole project as designed and present it to the town. Again, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions?
No, but the word's going to get out because Bob's back there taking notes. And tell that realtor, read the Times. There's been lots of stories in there about the preserve and the trailhead.
There's a lot of stuff up there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill.
Mayor and Council, my name is Jerry Butler. I'm here tonight speaking in favor of the Adaro Canyon Trailhead. Surprise, surprise. I am a trailblazer. I am a trailblazer and have been for eight or nine years, up there on Saturday mornings, building trails, maintaining trails. And I think, please keep the budget intact, fund the trailhead this year, get it built as soon as possible. And I think if you do, you will find that this may be one of the first steps that you can do to implement one of the priorities in Vision Fountain Hills, which was to attract young families to our community. There are a lot of people who do not know about our preserve. And the reason is, there's not good access. As soon as that access is in, the realtors can start advertising and promoting. And maybe we could attract some young families to town that enjoy the hiking and biking that the preserve permits. So please, I'm here to support the total funding, excuse me, of the, of the budget for next year. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. The other half of the bills.
Good evening, gentlemen, honorable lady. First of all, thank you for approving item one previously on accepting J-two engineering environmental design. That's a step along our way, what we want. I know that one point eight million is dedicated towards the two point two plus and that you have four hundred and sixty-eight mil, or four hundred and sixty-eight thousand already allocated from the CIP funds. Big encouragement, please leave it there. Last year, monies at this time for the trailhead at the last meeting, budget meeting, were deleted. And yes, there are a number of us here that are concerned that they not be deleted in the final session tonight. And also, being involved with the Vision Fountain Hills program, I'm aware that monies are very tight. I am appreciative of your including in the budget all funds for the trailhead. And I encourage you to make, keep this up. Please, don't leave the trailhead unfinished by taking the four hundred and sixty-eight thousand from the CIP money that is allocated, allocated from the CIP money and remove that. If you do, it'll mean such things as removing the restroom facilities. I would not like to see Fountain Hills have the reputation of leaving something unfinished. Already, we're probably not going to get water for drinking up there until 2020. And that is a concern. I think you will even see that the fifty parking spaces that we have allocated are not going to be enough. Keep that in mind for the future. We want to, as Jerry Butler said, we want to draw young people to the area, to the town. And with the fountain, with the trailhead, and all the other recreation facilities, I think that will be helpful. The trailhead will open access, further access, from Shea Boulevard all the way to Tonto National Forest. It'll give us much more access to McDowell Mountain Park, which is one of the meccas in the state for mountain biking. It'll also, through McDowell Mountain Park, give access to the, as yet unfinished, but developing three hundred and fifteen mile trail around Maricopa County, which was hitting ten of the eleven parks of Maricopa County. Please, keep everything in there. Don't let us go unfinished. Keep Fountain Hills even better than it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Oh, yes, Bill reminded me in the process. I have brought a number of, I'm speaking for the conservancy and have brought a number of people. You've seen some of them, but I think there are fourteen of us that are here.
All right, where are you? Where are you?
Oh, stand up, come on.
Come on, all right. And the, the only thing I want to clarify, if you don't mind, it's when you say we deleted it last time, that makes it sound like we didn't support it last time. We only took it out because we knew that time-wise, it couldn't have been built then. That's the only reason. It was moved to this year, okay? Let's say that, because you know how much we support the trailhead. And we want to see that built in. I haven't heard anything about taking out a bathroom. I know how important that is also. So we'll continue to work with the bills, make sure it's done right. And now that we have the dirt, right? You didn't say anything about the dirt. We got all that dirt from Adaro Canyon, and so we're, we're on our way. Okay, anybody else? No, all right, well, thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. So, any other comment here? Okay, and any known, and no other comments? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of resolution 2016-07 as just presented. Any further council discussion? And then I will ask for a motion.
May I still move?
And a second?
Mayor, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, five zero.
Consideration of resolution 2016-10, adopting and establishing the fiscal year 2016-17 budget implementation policy and improving the town organizational charts, the fiscal year 2016-17 pay plan, the schedule of authorized positions, the employee job descriptions, and the fiscal year 2016-17 comprehensive fee schedule. Grady, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, Mayor and council, before you, this particular item implements the budget as approved by the council. And just to show you what that consists of, it's this whole pile of papers here. We have just three hundred pages alone, just for the job descriptions of every job we have in the, in the town. It also consists of all the organization charts for each of the departments and overall organization chart for the town, and also the pay plans for part-time employees and, and full-time employees. This is a critical piece because it allows the staff to fully execute and implement the town's priorities that are contained in the budget. With that, I recommend approval.
Okay, any other questions for Grady or questions for Craig? Okay, any speaker card? No, we're, we're not, we're, we're done with that. I'll just look for a motion then.
Mayor, still move?
And a second?
Mayor, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, five zero.
Okay, then I get to adjourn the special session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Still move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one's closed. Whole lot of business to take care of today.
Congratulations, guys.
Yeah.
Are you sure we don't want to take that four hundred and eighty-three thousand?
Move to open the special session?
Okay, now we go back to reconvene the regular session. Item number seven, discussion of possible directions of staff regarding policy directing Salt River Project's governance. This item was postponed from four, seven, sixteen council meeting. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the item before you, I'll just summarize it. Essentially, the, the mayor and council were contacted by Mr. Paul Getty several months ago. And he had expressed concerns regarding the governance structure of Salt River Project as it relates to the, the board and not having the ability to have a right to vote in our community for the governance of the Board of Directors. And so Mr. Getty provided staff a resolution. It's in your packet. Staff had a chance to look into this issue in which my staff report goes into it quite heavily. As you're aware, SRP basically is divided in two different halves. The one half was originally founded, I believe, in nineteen oh three. And that was a co-op to bring water from the Salt River Valley into the river valley here in order to have agriculture and, and farming supported. The other piece is the Power District, which was formed in nineteen thirty-seven. And that is really the heart of the issue here with Mr. Getty. Just in reviewing this issue, and again, the staff report, I'm not going to rehash everything that I have in the staff report. But from staff's perspective, this is really an issue that I do not believe that the town should get involved in. And of course, it's your prerogative to discuss, debate, figure out what you want to do with this. But Salt River Project was established as a political subdivision. It's much like a city or municipality, just like we are. They have certain rights and privileges, just like a city. They're a creature of the state, just like we are. And just like we would not try to get involved in the governance structures of our neighboring communities around us, that's how I feel about this particular issue. So with that, I know Mr. Getty is here and he wishes to, to give a presentation. And council will have an opportunity to ask questions after his presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Getty?
Mr. Getty, representing of two other people who will not speak, Olivia Getty and Patricia Spade, requested five minutes, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor.
And this will tell you when you're up.
I've been watching, ma'am.
Okay, good.
Okay, Mayor, council, thank you. Paul, I'm Getty. As you may know, I'm a retired licensed professional engineer in the state of Arizona. I'm a full-time resident of Fountain Hills. This resolution that I'm proposing is only about getting our right to vote in the electric utility part of SRP. It has nothing to do with getting involved in the water part of SRP, which are two different entities. You have, you have some maps in front of you. And the top of, the top of the page, it represents the current SRP district where certain landowners have a right to vote. That, that area fits into this area of the bottom of the map. The bottom of the, I'm sorry, the bottom of the page is the total service area for SRP. You can see how much of the service area has no right to vote, no representation on the board, cannot run for the board. Disenfranchised areas include our own town of Fountain Hills, entire town of Queen Creek, half of Gilbert, parts of Chandler, Awatuki, parts of Mesa, Apache Junction, and all of the other rural areas in the blue part of the map. This, my next point is very important. A new buyer, a new real estate buyer who purchases land within, within this district, you know, in votable land, a new buyer did not put up collateral in nineteen thirty-seven. But that new buyer gets a right to vote in the SRP Board of Director elections and gets involvement, de facto involvement in governance of SRP. That is totally irrational. Meanwhile, all customer and property owners of Fountain Hills, Hills have been excluded from voting and representation for almost fifty years. The nineteen thirty indebtedness, the bonds of the original landowners in this district area of SRP, those bonds, that indebtedness has been paid off a long time ago, between nineteen fifties and nineteen eighties. So, so there are reasons to not allow other people to vote because of the original putting up of the lands is not a rational reason to prevent the people that, that should have a right to vote, to have a right to vote. SRP is effectively a state sanctioned monopoly based on a nineteen fifty-five agreement between SRP and APS. SRP can, their board can raise rates and set special charges at will. And we have no right, no right to vote or have, and we have no representation on that Board of Directors. We do not have a representative on that Board of Directors, nor do any of the other disenfranchised areas. SRP's governance does not answer to any oversight, such as the Corporation Commission. They only answer to the limited number of voters. Currently, about fifty percent, about half of SRP customers have no right to vote and are not represented in SRP governance. Now, granted, I have heard the one concern about this resolution because it advocates change in another political subdivision. But SRP tries to influence the town of Fountain Hills just the same. SRP has two government relations representatives dedicated to the town of Fountain Hills. Another concern that I have heard is that the state legislature might not entertain a change in the laws regarding the expanded SRP boundaries. But my, I have a strategic plan. This is part of my strategic plan. And part of that plan is to pass resolutions in other towns, lobby the state legislature to get them to understand that this effort has economic benefits for the state's budgets. And in conclusion, it's my opinion that our town council needs to go on record advocating for its own citizens to have a right to vote and be represented in SRP governance. SRP is a public utility that has excluded, excluded.
You've got your five, five minutes.
Sorry, thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, there's one more card.
One more?
This person did not want to wish, did not wish to speak, but wanted you to know that they were in favor of adoption of a resolution.
Okay, thank you. No, you just sit down. No, thank you. Any council discussion? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Dennis, question or motion?
Please explain to me one more time, Grady, if you would, as to why, why we wouldn't look at this?
Sure. Well, you've heard that there's no representation, you know, in Fountain Hills. But that may be the case. But certainly, if any of our residents here have a concern or issue, they can certainly go to a board meeting and actually speak at a, just like you can, we saw people here tonight do. So they can help effectuate change that way. Another reason is the fact that, I'll give you an example. I had an issue with a resident that was having problems with outages. And I worked cooperatively with SRP in resolving that issue. And we were able to get that problem resolved. So it was just like I was contacting any other utility company. And because it was the town that was making the contact, they, they gave it a high priority and dealt with it. The other issue, and I think this really speaks to the heart of it, Mr. Getty made an argument, which I think he did a sound job in, in doing. And that was that when this was originally formed back in nineteen thirty-seven, the landowners collateralized the property that they had in exchange for voting rights. I almost see this as like shareholders. So people who made the investment are the ones that are reaping the benefit, okay? And so it's like they have shares of stock, but instead, it's, it's their land. And over time, the property has, you know, been subdivided, it's been broken up. And there's more people now that are actually able to vote in those elections than back in nineteen thirty-seven, for instance. When SRP started serving our area, we are benefiting from that. And we have a, I should say, a unique relationship with them because there is a person that represents the town on a community advisory board. So when we do have issues such as billing or rate issues or whatever, we can work through that person, help troubleshoot those problems. So if you kind of look at the... So, if you kind of look at the issue, like, people who own shares of stock, they're the only ones that are able to vote by proxy or, or on issues such as who the Board of Directors should be, and so I think it's very similar to that, but they're, they're a hybrid. They're, they're, they're like a municipality, or like a political subdivision, but they're, they're not. They're very similar, they've got a lot of similar requirements that we have, they have the open meeting requirements, whereas like a company like APS doesn't. If we were to have our own municipal water, or sewer, or electric, we wouldn't be regulated by the Arizona Corporation Commission either. So there would be, see, there's a lot of similarities with the municipality or with the political subdivision. So, I believe for those reasons is why I would recommend that this is a matter really not for the town to get involved in.
Any other questions for Grady?
Thank you, Grady.
Okay, then I'm, is anyone interested in making a motion, or is there no interest in a motion? Apparently not. No, okay, then we will leave it at as is. There will be no vote on that. Okay, we go on to number eight, consideration of ordinance 16-06, authorizing issuance of an invitation for bids for sale of the Community Theater property. Grady?
Yes, Mayor and Council, you'll recall that the Community Theater property that we have in town has been a property that the town has, has had for many years and is operated by the Fountain Hills Theater. It's, it's leased to the Fountain Hills Theater, and over the years, we have expended a great deal of resources in maintaining this facility and the adjacent parking lot. And what is before you is a request to authorize an invitation for bids for sale for the Community Theater property. There would be, under this ordinance, restrictions so that it could only be operated by a theater company or for the use of a theater. The idea is, is that the town would be able to get from under the obligation of having to continue to maintain and invest in this particular asset. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Mayor and Council may have on this particular item.
Okay, do we have any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Grady? Okay, then, would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 16-06, authorizing issuance of an invitation for bids for sale of the Community Theater property.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, five zero.
Okay, for items nine and 10, one staff report, consideration of Resolution 2016-11, declaring as a public record, the town of Fountain Hills Flood Damage Prevention Code amended and restated June 2, 2016.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the next two items are related, and I'm going to go ahead and have Mr. Harrell, our, our town engineer, go ahead and explain what these are and what you're being asked to do tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Chapter 14 of the Town Code, flood damage prevention, has been in the code since 1994. The Arizona Department of Water Resources periodically reviews it and requests us to make changes in it to comply with current federal national flood insurance program changes and current state law, Arizona revised statutes. They did so a few months ago. Town Attorney's Office has now incorporated those into a code revision, and it's ready for your consideration. Most of the changes are housekeeping and updates and that type of minor, minor matters, so I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any on, on specifics of that, if you'd like.
Okay, any questions for Randy? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, thank you, Randy. The question would be, even though they're housekeeping items and minor items, are there any unfunded mandates coming to us, again, from the federal government that's going to cost the town more money?
Well, the two, the two items I did mention in, in the staff report that are somewhat substantive, one is a change in what you can do in accessory structures, detached garages and, and parking structures, and the other one is some additional record keeping that the town will have to do on our floodplain records, and I don't think it'll be a large cost, and it should be able to incorporate that with our existing staff, and so I don't, I don't really see a major change as far as.
Thank you, Randy.
Any other questions for Randy? Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm entertaining a motion. For item?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, five zero.
Consideration of ordinance 16-02, adopting by reference the Town of Fountain Hills Flood Damage Prevention Code amended and restated June 2, 2016, and amending Town Code, Chapter 14, Flood Damage Prevention, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the Town of Fountain Hills Flood Damage Prevention Code amended and restated June 2, 2016. Any counsel discussion on that item? Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Can I get a motion?
So moved, second.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, five zero.
Okay, council direction to the town manager? I don't have anything listed. Anybody have anything? Nope. Okay, summary of recent activities, anything? I've got just some stuff left over from last time, remember, we didn't do this, and Councilman Yates is going to do it next time, because he forgot it.
Beautiful report.
But thank you for attending the domestic violence of MAG. Okay, so let's see, just briefly, I attended the Executive Committee meeting of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, where we had to wrap up the legislative bills and how each will affect our town. We also continued our discussion on important items still pending, such as possible TPT changes. My mayor's youth council celebrated the end of the year together. There's only a few of the students who'll be graduating, so I look forward to seeing them again in the fall. My special thanks to Heather Ware, the coordinator of the program, and also thanks to Sheriff Joe for the tour of his new headquarters, and Senator Kavanaugh for his special behind-the-scenes tour of the legislature. Don't Leave Me dot org founder Deborah Nolan got my support, as well as Senator Kavanaugh's support, for her new nonprofit organization that promotes education related to not leaving your dogs in hot cars. This is a take the pledge campaign that any animal lover can participate in. Sheriff Joe has pledged his support as well. You can go to their website, Don't Leave Me dot org, for more information. Special thanks to Mike Chikaron's dog Bailey for appearing in the publicity photo with me to promote this very worthwhile cause. Bailey is a star now. And that's my report for today, and so, a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Answer the phone.[1776.13][1776.13]